All right, let's call me the order. Please rise to the next seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion, everybody? Your goal call board there was a question that they gave and change or excuse. Do you have proper notification of the open meeting? First, if you forgive that is welcome. And hopefully many, many board meetings in your family.
It's the most exciting thing in the world.
It's a mutual thing.
Except to someone it might be my easiest board meeting. Oh, Arrowhead.
The only.
All right, first action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the June 12th regular board meeting in the 18th session.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any question on the minutes? Hear none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Righteous gains against David. Next action item is resolution to approve the bill list, which is included in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill list. Second.
In a second. We have a motion and a second. Any question on the bill list? Hear none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications and comments for members of the public?
No one signed up.
Stand up. Okay, superintendent's report, Laura.
And today we have the ever fabulous Sue Casetta, Director of Learning, and ever fabulous Adam Bolt, our Director of Student Services. I thought if I say ever fabulous in front of Sue, would they also take that to mean Adam or would just...
Nope, you gotta do it for each. Just like with children.
Their offices together.
Kim's our babysitter.
So they're here to do our end of the year wrap-up from last year and perhaps a glimpse into what may be coming ahead.
Yeah, we were just talking about it's hard for us to do end of year report out without telling you. And so this is what we're doing for next year and this is the change we made. So it kind of serves as end of year and some thoughts about the following years. But we're going to work very hard to keep it brief. But it's impossible to do it short because there's so much to tell you.
A big year in a lot of ways and we were trying to figure out what would be most perfect for more members of Canada to understand. All right, so revising academic and career exploration. This will be first four slides of review for everyone by Jeff and Darrell from last year. So again, the vision of academic and career exploration is that students explore opportunities that align with their interest skills aspirations through an experiential reflective process. You'll recall that we're...Arrowhead is very keen on not locking students into this pathway or that pathway at high school. Then we changed the name from academic and career planning, which is known throughout the state, to exploration, just because we didn't want to tie kids down to you are going to do this, this, and this, and this will be your life. That things change, keep an open mind, know what your interests are, know the path that you want to go down, but also leave yourself some room, flexible with that. So with our academic and career exploration, we kind of do our vertical alignment by grades. We start in ninth grade with no. We want students to know themselves and we want them to know a little bit about the resources that they have available to them to start on this academic and career exploration journey. After ninth grade, we start to have them explore more in 10th grade. A lot more work within our software called Career Cruising, where they're looking at what their interests are, what their strengths are. They're starting to explore the career clusters. We're big on career clusters because we know that if we put students into kind of a career inventory and it splits and it spits out one job, whatever that top job is, that's what they're going to focus on and they're going to say Career Cruising is great or sucks based on how they agree with that job. They don't look at the overall picture. We have them look more at clusters, right? Because there's a lot to do within the construction field, but if it spits out a bricklayer, they may not like that right away. I might judge it as such. They continue to build the resume all throughout this process.
11th and 12th grade junior year, we've talked about in the past, is critical. It's critical to the post-secondary planning process that the work we put into in grade school, middle school, and high school, they now are in the plan phase. So they know explore, plan, and go. Junior year, big on planning. As they start to narrow their post-secondary options, remember the junior year, they take the ACT. As most have taken, many have taken the ACT prior to the junior year, but that mandated test in February provides students with a lot of feedback about what their potential options may look like. And in May of each year, they spend a lot of time looking at my senior year, how do I take some of the academic plans and thoughts that I have and put them into motion? Possible increase in career-based learning experiences have, did occur in the last few years and will occur because that junior year reflection. How do I connect the work I'm doing to the potential career and major as I look on my post-secondary options? The 12th grade go also very essential to the academic career planning process where timelines and worksheets and opportunities for students to look at what they need to do to pull together their applications for college, their work that has to go into if they're going directly into the military or directly into careers. The resume building, for example, is discussed in those lessons. As they solidify those plans and think about things like scholarship opportunities, how am I going to finance school and things like that? They also get the opportunity, their senior year, to provide us with a lot of feedback. And so part of what I want to explain to the board this evening is what 2019 seniors told us about academic and career exploration. I know that's really small, so I'll talk through it. A lot of our continued, and we did this survey for the second time this year, we did it for the class of 18 and the class of 19. And as I compared, there was a lot similar in terms of where our areas of strength are in academic career planning and some things we want to continue to work on. In areas of strength, students are connected with staff and feel comfortable approaching staff members about future planning. In other words, and in fact, in the senior survey, we said identify a teacher or staff member who was maybe really influential in your post-secondary plans. And it is heartwarming and exciting to see. One, it's not just one teacher, the vast array of staff members that kids identified. Yes, there were definitely teachers that were mentioned more than once in terms of this teacher really sparked my interest in my career field, this teacher was a good listener, listens to all my concerns about where I'm going, what I'm doing, the questions I have and things like that. So it's good feedback and I did share that with staff members who are mentioned, like seniors mention you as somebody who's been really influential and they really appreciated that feedback. Students feel that our curricular programs and courses are challenging and rigorous. This continues to be feedback from students overwhelmingly that they feel like, yes, I feel confident and prepared for my, for college preparatory or whatever those post-secondary programs may be. Students feel that staff care about them and their growth and learning and their future. And I think that that plays an enormous role in how, in what the Arrowhead experience is really all about. And again, overwhelmingly, community service students tend to reflect on those service learning opportunities that they had. Fifty-seven percent of our students do 24 or more hours of community service. We've got 20% of students who do nearly 100 hours of community service. We've talked about it in here a lot, but it can't be emphasized enough, our kids are service-oriented and that is a really positive for our school and our community. Areas to consider working on, and we don't want this all to be roses, right, and rainbows. Although we saw a slight increase in participation in career-based learning experience, students who participated in things like job shadows, mentorships, or certification programs, we, and we did see a few percentage points increase. We hope to see that grow a little bit more. Notice I'm not saying we're going to have 100% of our seniors who are doing job shadows or mentorships, because there needs to be a readiness factor associated with that. But we'd like to see that some of the academic planning processes that we put in place are indeed leading students to saying, I'm ready to go, you know, meet with a mentor or have maybe a more specific career learning experience because of the coursework or the planning that I put in place. So we continue to look at those numbers. We'd like to increase students' awareness of employee ability skills. We know that teachers know a lot about those, what we once called soft skills, we now call essential skills. And we have lots of dialogue and discussion about how to offer students feedback in those areas, but the awareness about when I'm trying to get you to be a cooperative learner or collaborator, why am I pushing this? It's not just about the collaborative learning experience, but it's about you're going to be likely in a work environment that requires you to be a strong collaborator or strong communicator. And so how can we purposely have students understand the whys behind some of the things that we're trying to do? And the survey that we gave all students, and I'm going to talk about that in a second as well, we do need to think about how to contextualize some of this career experience into our curriculum. There was feedback both from our ninth through 11th graders and seniors that said like, I like the information, I maybe would like to see this in a different format. Home rooms are one way to do it. It's the way we've exercised, I think, getting started in terms of these lessons, but we, if they see it in context, in classroom environment, I think it would be even more meaningful. When they see it within, in the context of the classes where they have relationships with students and relationship with teachers, we think we can even become more effective. So we need to kind of think about how to do that. Interestingly, class of 2019 and the same exact number to the decimal, I don't know how this happened, 64.1% of students last year and this year reported that parents are their most influential in terms of college career choices. No big surprise there. However, we know that we need to continue to engage parents along the process. We've put some things in place, wings, Tuesday topics, our counselor meetings freshman and junior year and along the way to make sure that we're engaging parents. What their experience was as they applied for colleges or universities, or if they had looked at going directly into the workforce, may be different today than it was over many years ago. So we want to make sure that they are, they're helping guide their students with really good information. Seniors also told us, and this is very similar to last year as well, although I want to highlight one area, the areas that they plan to major in, this is by career cluster, have not changed. In fact, the same order is for the class of 2019 is similar to the class of 2018 with healthcare, health science, businesses, STEM-related fields being our top career choices. I put way down at the bottom there kind of seven, because I said I was doing top six, but the very next is undecided. And we don't expect that to ever go away. Students are going to be undecided. The academic and career exploration process is not going to pinpoint or solidify a career for them. So that's okay, but recognizing that we have students that are still trying to figure it out, even their senior year. 90.8% of our students, this is self-reported, of course, plan on attending a post-secondary school within two years of graduating from Arrowhead. That's very encouraging number. That's an increase in what students told us last year and in years prior. National clearinghouse data will help solidify to see if that's actually what happens. This is what they're telling us they're planning on doing. I highlighted the fact that even though our number one school of choice for our students is other, because kids go all over the place, WCTC made the list this year. We have 31 students who plan to attend and that's a significant number. So we talk a lot and for those of you who are at the curriculum committee level, you hear me maybe preach, I don't know. But we have to continue to help students understand that in our backyard, we have an excellent, excellent opportunity in the two-year realm, in the associate degree place that yields wonderful career opportunities, that is a viable, wonderful resource. And I think we're making some headway in helping people recognize the four-year university may not be directly where they go. It might be where they go after that, but that's a significant increase and I continue to watch. And that's not even including then students who attend other technical schools throughout the state, which we have a number of those as well.
Our tech ed programs do a great job of getting our students out to WCTC to show them the facilities to meet with a faculty so that they can see and understand kind of what the programs are out there and what they're getting into. And the faculty out there does a great job of explaining like, if you don't do this program, here's what you can do. If you do do this program, here's what you can do. And the kids start to get that spark of, oh, this is what it means to be a trained HVAC person rather than going to work at a heated and air conditioning company.
Our schools-to-skills tours that the students do with the Waukesha County Business Alliance, a lot of times, and I've gone on those tours with Tom Whelan and other tech ed teachers, I am always intrigued by the career pathway that many of those manufacturers or people who work for manufacturing firms, their path often includes, I started working here and they sent me back to school, either WCTC or four-year university, and they paid for it. I mean, that's kind of a theme. So we want to continue to make sure kids are aware of that, of that career path.
And we have tours all the time.
Yeah.
We have interns, I mean, they continue on and they work there.
It's so great. Student feedback, ninth through 11th graders, we had 1385 students complete an academic career exploration student feedback. We hadn't done this in the years past. We're in our fourth or fifth year of implementation since we were a pilot school for academic career exploration. Some of the areas that I think we can feel pretty good about, I talked about the fact that overall, how confident do you feel in your planning for your future as a result of your own research and the activities Arrowhead has provided, home room, career cruising, conversations with staff? Eighty-five percent reported somewhat to very confident. Now, it's all self-reported, but I felt like that was pretty interesting. We'd like to dig into, well, why are 15% of our ninth or 11th graders not yet feeling confident? We know that our seniors feel very confident. That number, that number does improve a little bit between the junior and senior year, but we want to continue to watch that confidence level. I'm aware of different types of careers that may be interested in 93%, so it's somewhat aware to very aware. And there were other really positive things that came out of that survey. We based the survey on a document that was created four years ago, five years ago, that we call the outcomes of a graduate. We said the academic career exploration process and the curricular process needs to kind of come together. And we say these are the things where the confidence that we're building in our students, the problem-solving skills, the readiness for post-secondary is obviously the goal. So students answered questions based on whether they agree or disagree with certain statements. For example, I understand my strengths and weaknesses as it pertains to my learning and future employment. Ninety-five point six percent of our students felt that that was a true statement for them, somewhat true to very true. And so you're talking about students in the no explore, plan, go, no explore and plan, they're feeling, they're telling us anyways, they're feeling fairly confident. So those are the kind of things that we try to look at when we're, we're trying to decide, okay, where do we need to improve this process and how might it get better? So here's a couple of things that we're kind of, kind of looking toward. Couple of areas that we felt a little, were a little bit weaker. I have personal experience in my career path, going to a career fair, listening to guest speakers, 72% indicated that they have some more experience in that. I have basic understanding of how earning, budget, saving, and spending works. Now, 83% said somewhat to strongly agree, but most of our responses were in the 90%, you know, 90% of students saying, so we kind of indicate, although that's still pretty high, you know, you kind of don't know what you, you know, don't know sometimes. So we want to, we want to continue to watch, and I think that this is considered a little bit weaker. I spend my time in a manner that reflects my priorities. It was a little bit shy of that 90%, so we thought, okay, let's continue to look at time management is something that we engage in. I'm aware of how much college costs, the resources will be able to help me. Eighty-six percent said somewhat to strongly agree. We have very few students who strongly agree with that statement, so we want to make sure we're emphasizing through the process like opportunities and ways that you can pay for school or post-secondary. The academic career exploration team in August will continue to review the feedback. There were other places that were really mixed results. Some of the comments that students gave us, which I always find really entertaining, about like canned programs like Career Cruising, like some like I hate Career Cruising, now Hank Bingo on Career Cruising, like we, we understand that sometimes those, those programs to students, they don't always see the benefits of them. Career Cruising is now going to be called Zello, which is not going to help them in the process in a way. And I know this is being recorded, but it is intuitive as far as what that program is, but they have made some like enhancements to the interface of the program, which hopefully might help students see value. But we have, we do know we've got some mixed results as far as how students see value in that tool. That's the state-provided tool that we have for academic career planning. So we just want to continue to think about how we use it and what we ask students to do with it so that, so that we're looking at value. Students also kind of told us that the home room format doesn't always work for them and staff has kind of said that too. It's hard, you're running in between classes, you're getting to home room, you don't always know that person, you don't always know the kids in there, and you're asked to be thinking about pretty heavy stuff in regard to your future planning. We want to try to think about, might there be another format that, again, more contextualized, but right now the home room format is what we've got. So in all honesty, those are the things we'll probably take a look at and ways to improve the process and continue to monitor how staff feel about it, how students feel about it, and what does it mean for post-secondary success? And I want to talk a little bit more about that with Redefine Ready, but Adam's going to talk about beyond home rooms.
First, I really enjoyed the Career Cruising change to Zello because I just, whenever I think about it, I think of them sitting around like, what are we going to call this program? Where kids go in and they kind of explore their careers and mess around, what if we call it Career Cruising? And they're like, great, perfect. What if we made our name make less sense? And then they came up with like Zella, which nobody understands.
Just like a Jello.
No, that's exactly what I thought.
Beyond home rooms, so home rooms are kind of the stuff that everyone gets. We have concentrated with our at-risk population, our struggling learners, and our students in special education, connecting them to post-secondary environments a little bit earlier in their high school careers. What we found kind of when we started this academic career exploration journey and we really started to hone in on what students were doing, what they were thinking, and where they were going, we found that we thought they were aiming too low. So we knew these kids, we knew their skill sets, and then we knew where, what they were doing after high school, and it didn't line up with their potential. So some of the things that we've done within both those realms is hooked up our students with job shadows between Heidi Hamilton, Dave Bechtel, John Hope, Leah Call, and Eileen DeLugue. We have a lot of great connections in our area and they know people that have jobs, we'll let them come shadow. It may not be a formalized internship, it may be a day, maybe a couple of days, it may be, you know, a week or two that they're able to get out there, but they can at least get a sense of what that job is. And a lot of times those job shadows and the people that are wanting to take on a lot of our students, they turn into more or less like mentorships where the lines between mentorship and internship, a lot of times is blurred with some of the people that we have working with our students because they recognize the lay of the land for these students, they realize that they have some things to overcome in their personal lives. So the people that own these businesses or maybe are the direct supervisors do a really good job with getting the students in and working with them on a lot of those like employment skills, because our students are going out there and they have the skills to compete in the industry. But some of the things they just don't know in terms of just like how to interact with coworkers, how to ask for help, how the chain of command works at times, and even, you know, giving them a little bit of encouragement to go out to WCTC and get your degrees, let it know that they can compete in those college environments. Internships, we have two main venues for that through special education. Project Search, which we wrote a grant for and we received the grant this year, so we were able to send more kids at less of the cost this year. I believe we have five that are confirmed going to Project Search, that's through Easter Steels. And that is what the state has researched is one of the best internship programs that we can set up for our students in terms of turning that internship into a job. So that is a program where they don't even spend any time at Arrowhead, they are fully going into a job site, going into work and getting training in the medical field, the service industry field, or the business field in a variety of professions. The students have to be ready to go into that Project Search. There is a application and interview process for it, but incredibly good news that we are going to have more students. And again, getting that grant, which hopefully the state continues, really lessens our pain because it is a budget hit to us when students do go out to that program, but the grant helped out tremendously. Our 18 to 21 program gets our students that are here past their four years and are just needing more job coaching through the school in that safe environment. That kind of works, starts in the coffee shop when they're in school here and then when they're in the 18 to 21 program, they branch out into the community. And sometimes it's volunteer work, other times it's work that they can get paid for. It really runs the gamut between full employment to internshipping and just getting their toes wet in those fields. But they learn responsibility, they learn how to get around, they learn how to follow directions. And again, the student skill level runs the complete gamut within that program. Career peers that we've gone to, this is one that John Hope's in the picture there. Him and Dave Bechtel and Anthony Christian have really valued this, the Building Advantage. And if a board member wanted to come to this next year, I think it's worth it. I went for the first time this year after hearing about it. And it's a great experience to see it through the eyes of the students. So this was students in our alternative ed program and students in our special education program that are more bent towards going into the trades. A lot of these kids really struggle with school, but one of those kids in that picture is Anthony Christian and Dave Bechtel said pretty certain that's the best welder that we have in the school and probably for like the last five years, but struggles with school, also struggles making that connection to what am I going to do next? He's another student that aimed super low to start out. When we take kids to the Building Advantage, Dave and John and Leah, Anthony, they do a good job of preparing the kids, like when you go there, you need to be taking in information, you need to be listening, you need to have questions that you're asking these people. And then kids are kind of engaged in listening and yeah, huh, they're kind of excited to go. We get in the van and it's like 17, 18-year-old boy banter in the van on the way there. We get there, they start talking to these guys, they go in with this like skill set that they think they have, they want to apply, but it doesn't say like welding anywhere. It says like steam fitters, you know, plumbing, these fields that they never thought about going into. And we take them around in small groups, because if we let them go by themselves, they wouldn't ask any questions and they would just kind of bum around. But what they get is a really good, really good info and knowledge into the world of work, where their skills are needed, where people want what they have and are willing to pay them a really high, you know, hourly wage to do that kind of work. But even beyond that, the first one we stopped at was steam fitting and we were, the students were able to start considering like, what are benefits? What's a pension? Like what does it mean to be in the union versus not being given? How does that work? And it really started to gear them for, and these are the things that the kids expressed was the fear of life after high school, because maybe because seniors, they start to really realize like how much help they're actually getting from the school and they start to get a little nervous about how does like life work for them? This helps connect them to what they might want to do in the future. It helps them aim higher, gives them a little bit of direction, and it increases their engagement when they're back at school, because they start putting all these things together that we're talking about and that we're saying and like that, like I have to be doing this or doing that. Even we walk around it in front of all the guys, we say, hey, is there any benefit to taking the ACT? And they're like, yes, if you get a 15, you get to skip all these courses. And that's either like a course like the union has put up or a course they need you to get for a certification through something like CTC. So they start to like really increase that engagement after going to the job fair. The bus ride home is silent, like, and we don't have to tell them like, reflect on what you heard. We get in the bus and it, or the van, and it is completely silent on the way back and there's a palpable change in the students. So we really start to see the advantage of showing students really high-quality work experience and getting them in front of the people that actually do the work while they're in high school, because it does start to put A and B together for them. And it does help them to see, hey, this is my path now, this is where I can go and aim higher and not just do, you know, the safe choice of like what they think they, they know. It's eye-opening for them quite a bit. In letter E, we started to do mock interview work. So some of our special education teachers who, some of our special education classes in the 18 to 11 program are doing mock interview work with our students, which has been extremely helpful, because we know that they can do the job once they get out there, but then we work on them with like landing the job. Sometimes for the students, it's really hard to interact with people, they could be painfully shy, they could be not confident, they could have social anxiety. And that mock interview cases that helps them because we know the questions that people are going to ask more or less and they're just like, oh yeah. Like they ask five of the questions that they practiced on. So that's been extremely beneficial for our at-risk and special education populations.
In terms of other indicators, I know this is really small, but it's on that screen, it's like fully more, like too much. But anyway, in terms of continuing, you know, like the opportunities that Adam discussed in Ulta and special ed, we do look at other ways that we try to redefine whether students are ready for post-secondary success. Redefine Ready, exclamation point actually, is a national campaign. The School Superintendent's Association nationally, this is going back a couple of years now, introduced a new research-based metric to more appropriately assess students that are college-ready, career-ready, and life-ready, which is a little bit harder to measure. But the Redefine Ready campaign is something that the Waukesha County Schools and CSU One Schools have been connected with and annually will continue to look at how are students doing? So here's a couple career-ready indicators. The research indicates that 90% attendance, so attending school 90% of the time or better is a good indicator of career readiness. And we all know, for those of us who work in various work environments, you've got to be there, you've got to show up, and employers have said, we really just need people who aren't going to show up. 98% of our students currently meet this benchmark of 90% or better attendance. Ninety-eight percent of our students currently meet this benchmark of ninety percent or better attendance. So that's a good indicator. Twenty-five hours of community service is another indicator. We want service-oriented employees. And we think about various industries, that's important. We reported already fifty-seven percent of our seniors reported, self-reported twenty-five or more hours.
Is it just senior year or all four years?
We ask it about all four years, but to be truly honest, kids can't remember. They're not adding it up, but they know they've done some. Because, and more recently, they know they've done that for college application purposes and things like that. So it's not a perfect measure. I want to be clear about that. It's not like verified hours. Workplace learning experiences, we talked about the fact that there's growing interest there, but we really don't have a metric right now to know how many are really meeting that benchmark industry credential. Seventy percent of our seniors graduated with a credential. So some kind of certification program. They walk out the door, I'm, you know, I was a part of youth apprenticeship. I had a CNA. I had something like that that's a certifiable credential going into the workplace or going into, going into a school. Our EMT certification, for example, that we brought forward, which is growing, which is really exciting, those students who take that exam will leave with a credential.
That sounds like a high number.
It's a good number. I think, I think we want to continue to see that grow a little bit. I mean, again, we don't want to portray that this is going to be a hundred percent of our students who are going to leave with an industry credential. We know our culture, we know our community, we know our students that are college-bound are probably looking more so at like advanced placement learning and things like that for college credits. But we do know that when students connect, especially students who do struggle with, here in school in their four-year opportunity to connect with a career, they will continue that on. That's part of our Carl Perkins graduate research that we do. When they concentrate in a career or in that credential, they continue, either post-secondary or in that career. So we want to continue to monitor that. Again, something for everyone, opportunities for everyone. We just want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're making students aware of those opportunities while they're here.
Have we monitored that for a while?
Carl Perkins has this monitor concentration, yeah, but now kind of reporting out, like really identifying for people career readiness. You know, you don't have to have all of these, all of these things, but this would be one. So for the student that was really gung-ho to be a youth apprentice, but maybe didn't have other indicators, okay, but you did that. That's important, and that should be celebrated and considered. As students use these benchmarks, more importantly than a school report out, students can be looking at, am I career-ready? Am I college-ready? This is going to become kind of the language of that readiness.
We know that you're looking for a hundred percent, but I would think if you're seeing that number rise, it's going to be a little bit each year. But it means they're getting that they're knowing that.
Taking advantage of wonderful opportunities. Yeah, absolutely. Dual credit career pathway courses, things like the EMT program. That's, you know, where you can earn both college credit and high school credit while you're here, you know, while you're here. We're continuing to look at ways that we shape those opportunities. I really believe that there needs to be a readiness factor for students. I know that there's maybe different philosophies that exist. Like, hey, why don't you go try, you think you might be interested in astronomy? Well, take a dual-credit opportunity in astronomy. That sounds great, but we need to have a sustainable program. We need to be able to support those things through early college credit program, through Start College Now. Those are dual credit through the Dual Enrollment Academy, of which we've had a little bit spiked interest, not a lot, but three kids last year, five kids next year. Those are the kind of programs that we want to continue to say like, how are we vetting students to know that there's readiness there, that they've done the coursework that they need to do here? That's conversations with counselors and program leaders. But important that we continue to think about those opportunities. And you guys know me, I'm all about expanding opportunities. So two or more organized co-curricular activities. If you're involved in co-curriculars, there's research-based that says you've demonstrated a lot of skills needed to be career-ready. And eighty-point-nine percent of our students report participating in two or more curricular, co-curricular activities. That's very encouraging. That's self-reported, again, not validated scientifically. Academic indicators, the Redefine Ready Framework research says two-point-eight or higher, which seems maybe to some of us like a low benchmark, but it's, again, it's a national program. Of our students, seventy-eight percent of our students meet that threshold of a two-point-eight percent or higher currently. And we know that seventy-two percent of our students are a three-point-oh or higher. So, you know, kind of thinking about that in terms of their academic readiness for post-secondary success. Additional to those factors, they do look at advanced placement exams. Arrow had ninety-one percent, that's a 2019 statistic, had a passing rate of three or better. A five is the highest you can get on an AP exam. We had thirteen, one thousand three hundred and sixteen exams written this year, which was higher than last year, and we pretty much maintained our success rate. And earning an A, so not only getting a passing grade on the exam, but earning an A, B, or a C in the class. And Sugato pulled that information for us. We have ninety-eight percent of our participating AP students earning a C or better in their AP classes.
So ninety-eight percent?
Ninety-eight percent.
That's correct.
So of that thirteen hundred and sixteen, it was, I could, I had to go through and kind of look at, you know, count for Ds and Fs. And it's a very, very small number of students, thirty-one or something like that. That turns out to be ninety-eight percent. So those are some factors. Now, life indicators are more difficult to measure. Some of our outcomes of a graduate, you know, things like perseverance, grit. I know how to problem-solve, I know how to cope when things are tough. I, you know, fail forward, all of those things we try to consider. The Redefining Ready kind of organization is trying to determine how might be some metrics we can use to kind of articulate whether students are ready to do that or not. We do use our ACE Academic Career Exploration Survey to try to get a sense of what kids think about in terms of their readiness. But, so that's something we may be able to talk more about. But life readiness feels is a big part of it. The idea behind the initiative is not just a number. A lot of times ACT, you know, provides, and we compare districts and all of that, and that's fine. But the ACT is not the only metric that'll determine whether students are ready for post-secondary. It is a metric, but it's not the only one. So that's kind of language you're going to hear from me, I think, ongoing. That might be new to some of you. I've written about it in the Arrowhead Advisor and things like that. But that's going to take shape more and more. TLT, really quick, areas of focus. That's a teaching and learning team for eighteen nineteen. We continue to look at discipline literacy, which I've talked a lot with this, with the board about. And we continue to have a leadership focus on, focus on improving communication and managing leadership. We're a young, young, we're a newly-formed, larger team of newer administrators. And so this is a good focus for us. I'll talk about in a second about how we kind of did some things that were associated with that goal or that focus. That's a lot of stuff on a slide. I gotta, somebody list of that list for me, it's too, you've got too much on there. Okay. You too much on there, thank you. Just a review, we've talked about discipline literacy in here before. It's not just your basic reading comprehension strategies. We're looking at building the language and comprehension that's needed for very deep understanding within disciplines. For example, the social studies departments have embarked on and will continue to look at argument development, both in reading arguments and writing arguments. That is a standard for college readiness. It's one that crosses a lot of areas into certain careers. Really articulating with evidence and argument is what they're continuing to work on. They just embarked on that more this year. Science has looked at reading and interpreting data, measuring data. We look at that in comparison to some of our standardized assessment scores on ASPIRE and ACT. They look at district assessments. They're talking about language they use to interpret data, best practices and so forth. Math and literacy, literacy and math, for those of you who know Dave Olunchek, he's talked to the board a little bit about this work. This is continued for them. They look at addressing assessment language, in particular in math, to say like, when we use certain language in instruction, is that reflected on the assessments that we use? Is it reflected on assessments such as the ACT and ASPIRE? We're using common language. For example, if Dave Olunchek teaches stats and Steve Schmidt teaches stats, it's not the stats, words, and language according to Dave Olunchek. There is common language in those disciplines that we want to make sure that we're using. It's precise language, and it's important to use that precise language so that our students are insiders in the disciplines that they're learning. And again, for those that are going to go on into math-related fields or statistics, it's important that we use that language. English is looking at literary terms and vertical planning. They identified a key terminology and vocabulary that's used to analyze literature. And they've now begun to scaffold ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. What are we really asking students to do to get at that deeper knowledge? Really, with the outcomes of if we're preparing students for like advanced placement English, how are we preparing students across the grade levels? CTE addresses things like financial literacy and technical literacies, performance. It's all doing literacy, language associated with how to read music, visual literacy, and language associated with movement. And a lot of it has to do with how they assess the work, their students. And word languages inherently is a discipline. And it's literacy, it's reading, writing, thinking, doing, they already do that. But they did spend some time this year taking a look at the discussion of cultural literacy, which crosses, which certainly crosses different languages. So that's, that's kind of been the work. That work continues to pull. We continue to learn, we continue to implement. We could work on it for the next twenty years. The outcome, as I said before, is deeper learning within subject areas and giving students insider status in those subjects. And so I think it's, it's very relevant, and teachers seem to be, have some energy behind it. In terms of student results as a result, it's, it's all going to be kind of individual disciplines that have to identify what they're looking at for those outcomes. The leadership focus, I'm almost done. A function and purpose of this team is to talk about how we lead, how we lead an organization. Arrowhead High School, four grade levels, extremely complex. The workplace, two buildings, that football field, I've said it before, might as well be miles and miles apart because we really have to work hard, all of us as leaders. And I mean, formalized leaders and informal leaders have to work hard at making sure that as we implement the change process, that we're mindful of all the things that we need to consider for that change to really be impactful. So a lot of the work that our leadership team does is not task-oriented. It's not, we're onto this, and then we're onto this. It's a lot of thinking and discussing and taking school-wide initiatives and how are we breaking that down? And how are we gathering feedback? And what's the process we're using for implementation? What resources are we putting in front of teachers? Are we listening to the anxieties that might be out there in regard to those changes? You know, anything from using an LMS like Canvas to, you know, some of the things we want to do as student supports, et cetera. That team is like a, kind of a, develops, it's almost like a think tank. How do we communicate about it? What tone do we use? How do we listen? What's the language we need to use so that we're, we're making sure we're all speaking somewhat with one voice? And that, that's important. It can be, it can really impact the, I think, morale of an organization. So we've learned a lot. We continue to learn a lot about just the change process. Program leaders, when we talk about change, are imperative. They are, they have all different perspectives, and it can slow us down, but they keep us honest. They're a huge part of our organization. And so when we think about things like a focus plan and bringing that work forward with our, with our staff, we are telling our staff, here's going to be our strategies with each one of these enduring goals. It's important, they're the ones who said, no, they need that voice. And they remind us, they need the voice at the table. They should be giving us the strategies. We should be collecting that information. And it was like, yes, you're right. They develop those processes. They provide the impact, they provide the input that I think help make those effective changes more, I think, long-term, more systemic. And so the leadership focus has been a good one. It probably will continue in terms of, we haven't like hit that mountain top yet, and we've got all leadership figured out, we're all writing books about leadership. We're not doing that quite yet. But we are definitely having really impactful discussions. Our June leadership kind of retreat time was really important to kind of getting on the same page about what our roles and responsibilities are within the organization. This is a change matrix. I don't know why I put this in here. I just love it because I refer to it, it's, you've been in my office, it sits right in front of my computer. And when I'm listening to things, or there's concerns, or I'm fielding a question, and I, and I'm sensing anxiety, or I'm sensing resistance, I can look and say like, what are we missing? So some of you who are involved in various church organizations or other organizations might sometimes see this happening, and it's a wonderful resource. It's all over the web at here at the moment, and I'm just coming today. Last, some other learning, additional learning real quick. We have a lot of curriculum processes in place. This board is already well-aware of new, new changes to courses. We're slowing down in the course proposal world, which is good. Hopefully embedding and revisiting some of how those changes have impacted programs. You guys approved Computer Science, which implemented two new courses this year. This was the first year of that, of which we had a hundred percent passage on the AP Computer Science exam in our first year. That is really impressive. And Steve Schmidt and Chris Martin and Nick Rengos and Dave Olunchek shall be congratulated for really good work there. That's only going to, success breeds success. And I think that they're, they're likely to, going to see increased interest as a result. As you well know, coaching and officiating started this year. Totally different type of course than what we've offered in the past. We were featured in Referee Magazine, National Association of Sports, officiating. This was our first year of the EMT connection with the Lake Country Fire and Rescue. And that grew for next year. We've got the max, in fact, we've exceeded the maximum amount of students that they'll take by one, to make sure all the students who wanted that opportunity got that opportunity. You approved courses for next year, Business Connections, Introduction to Business Leaders, Mindset, Warhawk Manufacturing, and block classes for Social Studies and English. We're excited to see what those opportunities bring for kids in learning. And of course, we've got ongoing curriculum improvement. Thirty-one curriculum projects, eleven-hundred-and-twenty-eight hours of collaborative curriculum that's taking place this summer.
It is the best.
It's really great. Oops. Some work in progress, which I won't go into a lot of details on. We met today at Student Supports at Arrowhead. Greg, myself, and Adam, and some others have facilitating the process to really look at how to improve supports for all students, academic, social, emotional. And kind of, we got into some nitty-gritties on how to, how to communicate and how to bring staff together, again, north and south, across the work that needs to occur to make sure we're supporting students in their, in their goals. We have efforts to collaborate with feeder schools, more so than we've had in the past. Math, science, reading, and technical education teams, counselors, I forgot about them as well, in special education have met. Formally, informally, networking to make sure we comprehensive curriculum that gets kids ready for high school. That's going to continue to grow. That's good work. We've had collaboration and collaborative experiences with our feeder schools forever. But reinvigorating some of that work with some needs behind why is important to know that's coming forward. And looking at personalized professional development for our staff. Your Choose Your Own Adventure kind of piloted that with summer learning, focused on like book clubs and opportunities that teachers can participate in professional development. They can shape it. We're looking at maybe formalizing that a little bit going into next year. And that's how our professional learning could start to look a little bit different. But that's all work in progress. So that's me.
All right, Student Services highlights. If you remember all the way back to last year, I expressed some frustration with our data behind our students with disabilities, receiving intervention or reading scores in that seventeen, eighteen range. And what we thought was going on was kind of a lack of effort. There's been a lot of work and time put in with our special education teachers and our students in special education and their ability to read. We made, and a lot of people started making this discovery kind of independently. It was really neat this year. But what our special education teachers found this year was that more important than the actual reading skill is that a lot of our students had a big problem with setting themselves up for success. The environment that they would read in, that they would take a test in, their testing strategies, their mindset going into the test, and their greater ability to work through tough problems when they got in. Our teachers spent a lot of time sitting down, working with them. While they took a STAR assessment, they gave them no hints on what the answer was. They just talked, asked them questions about how they were feeling, what their process was, why they made the choices that they made. And then they would do that for a couple sessions, and then the kids would go on. They'd continue to take this assessment with all the teachers. And we saw it translate over in a big way to our assessment. So you see up there, an increase on STAR scores, seventy-seven percent increased, and sixty-four percent increased the rate above the national average, which means that sixty-four percent of our students with disabilities receiving interventions in reading are actually closing their reading gap to their peers. So that was great to see. And we don't have to do a round of applause, but a round of applause goes out to our special education teachers. Then again, it was, it was kind of like, I had people come in, they're like, hey, I was thinking on this student, I kind of found this out about them, and this is the way that this one's taking in. So they all really got their hands dirty on this and were able to come up with a solution to a problem that was really outside the box and something that we hadn't seen before, but maybe I suspect it's a play in our role piece. With our reading, we really have done a lot of work, like I said, over the past year. So now we want to put all things together. So tools that we brought on board recently, the Sunday System, STAR, Achieve, Newzella, bringing out a reading specialist to really get in and work with students to make sure they get what they need. The strategies, we know that we've had great strategies for students to use while taking, while doing their reading, while being active within their reading. while being active within their reading. That's something we've had in place now for probably like ten years. Student motivation though, our teachers have been interested and wants to work closely with the English Department on Kelly Gallagher's work. Kelly Gallagher's work is all about how you can do anything you want with reading and it doesn't mean a thing if they don't want to read. So our teachers have spent a lot of time making sure that we're giving materials in the hands of students that they're actually interested in reading. And then student understanding. So working with students, again, I touched on this on the last slide, how they get themselves into an environment to succeed, why they need to succeed with their reading and how to work through it at difficult times. A lot of what's in there again is how they set themselves up for success, why they need to know it. We do a lot of that like with academic exploration, like we tie it to where they're going to be headed eventually. And then just how to persevere through. And it helps that we have a lot of coaches on our special ed team that do that with their athletes anyways. Again, another piece. Mental health for the eighteen-year school year. We took the IRBS again this year, which is nice because the state's on board with everyone doing it now. There's a little bit of differences with the data that we receive. But now it will be on an every-two-year cycle and the state will be helping us out immensely with that work as well. So the number that I always look at the most important is students that feel like they belong in school. State relatively steady since we started giving this survey back in 2011. But it, it's seventy-five percent, but it still hurts me that we have twenty-five percent of our students are the way that I look at it, an entire class of students that feel like they don't belong at school. So that work is always going to be at the forefront and always continuing. Students who reported that they feel like they have an adult in their school that they can talk to. It seems like 2016, 2017 was an anomaly year. I can tell you that the test was, or the survey was slightly different that year. I don't know if it was to make twenty percent difference, but we seem to be hovering around sixty percent. Statewide, the average for these answers is seventy for both questions. So feeling a little bit better about the feel like we belong at school question. A little bit worse about they have an adult in their school that they feel like they can talk to. You know, you run through a lot of things in your head about that question, but we look at what we control. I don't think that the forty-minute class periods and ten class periods a day help us make that really strong connection with a staff member versus schools that maybe have a block class where they're getting eighty minutes every day with that same teacher. But there's obviously work that we need to be doing in that arena. And I'm impressed on that.
Does it differ at all by the grade levels? I didn't know if it's a new freshman class.
It does. Freshmen's are lower. Yep, yep. Seniors are higher. Seniors are significantly lower for feel like they belong at school, which I don't know if that is a function of the time of year that we give that survey was in May of this year. So do they interpret that like, I am running to be in high school here. I do not belong in high school. So, yeah. And in future years as well, I think that due to that, and it was that way this year and I went back, we had given that in like the September to February range different years. And it was not that stark of a difference. It was kind of similar across the board. So I tend to believe that it was like, I'm, I do not belong in high school. Thank you very much.
I'm ready.
Kind of attitude.
See that tweet in that survey on the previous page saying that, you know, I feel like I don't belong. Is there like a follow-up question? Like, why don't you feel like you belong?
No.
Or, you know, same with the adult. I didn't know if that would be good, like next time just to kind of dig.
We can add those questions to the survey. So the survey is standardized by the Center for Disease Control, the CDC. It actually puts out this survey in the state of Wisconsin, just like other schools around the nation have adopted it. And the state of Wisconsin has now made a concerted effort to try to get all schools on the same cycle, giving the survey so we can get really good statewide data. Help them kind of disperse resources and kind of figure out where to put their money. So there's, there's actually, there's some questions that we have, like we would, they actually have other surveys, like can you put this question in there? Because we like, with the ask, we don't want to give two surveys, but they're like, no, because this is the way that it's going to come to us. Work towards that end is continuing our work on trauma-informed care. Sue talked about the teaching and learning team, you know, in our June retreat work. Really coming to a great understanding of like all the things that are going on in the school. We talked a lot about mental health and just these three principles that will continue to develop staff on plan in August. They have it in service, continuing throughout the year with emails, professional collaboration time, and then our Oktoberfest and service going back to these principles. There's a lot more within trauma-informed care besides these three principles. But if we practice these three principles with every interaction that we have with students, we will start to see students feel like they're more connected to school. And their simple, bill of course, what we do extremely well at Arrowhead. Listen, ask questions first rather than telling and then co-plan rather than again, coming up with a plan for the student, work with them to develop a plan forward. The Arrowhead Way focuses on connectivity. We're adopting to start with Hello campaign that was used by Laura Miller this past year in one of her classes. It best comes out of the Sandy Hook school shooting. And it's a, the idea behind it is that school violence, but again, school violence is just a symptom of loneliness and isolation almost all the time. So if we can help connect to school, we're going to see a lot of better outcomes from that. Not just a safer school, but a place where more kids feel connected to it. So start with Hello. Helps kids learn that there's things that they can do to make their school be a safer, warmer, more welcoming place. And it's just as simple as that. Say hello to somebody. Find somebody who doesn't look like they have somebody to connect with, somebody that's alone. Say hello to them, learn their name, learn who they are and connect them to your school. The postcards are extremely successful. Again, concentrating on the teacher handwritten notes calling the students for doing something well that the students, that the students' parents are not going to be able to see on Skyward. So it's referred to for a test. It's for something like a kind of personality trait or quality or something that they did that without that note card home, the family wouldn't know about. And again, great reviews on those. And then we're also starting a calendar of connectedness. So our baseball team through theme of the month last year did a calendar of kindness in teachers that kids are really into, being able to just see what was on the calendar every day. And it's, it's almost like a mini challenge. It's not going to be every day, but we're just going to find spots and random ones through it, throughout the year to put on, like try this, you know, in terms of connectedness, like say hi to five million people today and what have you. So that kids are really.
This is absolutely.
Other pieces, again, this is an incredibly big year and hats off to our site counselor team for carrying a lot of the weight on this work. They don't willingly went into this work doing that it was going to submarine a lot of the stuff that they did and add hours to their day. Universal at the hall screen, we've talked about this one all throughout the fall. But again, two-hundred-and-five families contacted from doing that at the hall screen, slash students met with and made that initial contact. It was new information to fourteen percent of those families. But like I said, back in the fall, it was a hundred percent of families that were thankful that they felt like they had somebody that was in the loop at school and was aware of what their student was going through. And it was kind of being able to take that first step just to say, hey, like, you know, we can talk about this if there's something going on. On the IRBS, going along with that mental health data, forty-four percent report problems with anxiety and twenty-four percent report feeling sad or hopeless in the last twelve months. So you can do the quick math and find out that there's more students reporting feelings of anxiety or feeling symptoms of depression on the IRBS as opposed to them showing up on our mental health screener. The reason for that is a lot of time, the way that the question is asked is just asking like problems of anxiety in general, where our mental health screener is much more stringent in finding students that are likely to have what's labeled like a clinical level of anxiety or depression. But again, good numbers to back it up with and just kind of know what might be up there with our student population. With our sites and counselors, there's two numbers there to report. We started tracking this the other year. Ongoing meetings, ongoing meetings are considered meeting with a student once a week for eight weeks or four. Last year, they had eighty-nine students that they were doing that with. This year, they had a hundred and thirty-two. So they've made a concerted effort to get more kids in the door as much as they can to meet face-to-face with more students. Whether it's related or not, I don't know. But you also see our risk assessments. When we say risk assessments, we mean suicide risk assessments. That went from thirty-nine down to twenty-six this year. Again, I don't know for sure if they're related or not, but it's an interesting number. We even started connecting more students just from an initial contact made through a mental health screener to bringing more kids in the door and meeting regularly with them. Did that have something to do with it? I don't know, but it's interesting number for right now. More mental health stuff, again, I guess that big year. We had a private counseling service come in and be available at Arrowhead. Seven students gained access to a possible night slots, which is great. Next year, I want to advertise it to the entire population. I talked with Pete Locky, who runs a similar service. And they said when they did a little bit more advertising with it, they just found that families were reporting that more students were gaining access to mental health services. They're right now up to two full-time people a day where we had one full-time person a day. So it doesn't cost us anything, you know, obviously to bring the people and have them in the building. It costs us a retainer fee last year, but as soon as we bought the two full-time, that won't gain anything. That piece again is minimal. So, and that's just to retain the person that they have on staff so that they don't go to find work elsewhere. Third assessment team formation, this is state mandated through our school safety. Is it mandated through the grant or is it just mandated overall? I forget what it is.
This was.
I guess it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Through the grant, which almost every school has money for. But third assessment team was formed, that is our SST team. So Greg's involved with that, the two associate principals and our site counselor teams are all part of our assessment team. This is what the DOJ labels as the number one preventative service in school safety. So they said that if something's going to happen, people will talk about it. You will find out about it. And the best way to do it is to make sure that you process that through everything. We had three instances that we ran through with this team. Last year, they all found out to be of low risk and brought to, I think, a successful conclusions, uh, solution. So law enforcement was actually involved in two of them anyways, which the recommendation of arrest doesn't bring you to law enforcement. But our, our relationship with Waukesha County Sheriff's and Officer Friar just makes it a little bit easy just to make sure everyone's safe and sound. Student harassment form, again, site counselor team along with APs just doing really great work this year. So this is now all reported microaggression. We recorded and tracked what microaggressions are. Are things that don't really come to the level of harassment. So harassment is a, you know, a direct attack that somebody feels hurt by. We're now recording, if, if I run into Daryl in the hallway and Daryl goes into one of our counselors and says, this guy, I think his name's Adam, he ran into me hallway, it felt on purpose. I don't know if it was on purpose or not. We're recording it. Our APs are meeting with me to say, did you run into Daryl on purpose in the hallway? Whether I say yes or no, whether I'm lying or not, people know that that stuff is being watched and that you're going to have a, a conversation about it. I, I filled out the form once and it went very great. And the student said, it's not happening anymore. So the student being called name was like, oh yeah, we have a form for this now. So she's telling me the event and I type it out. Goes to Becky the next day, Becky, or even that day maybe Becky's got the kid. And the next time I know with the kid, she's like, no, done. So that was a great solution to it. It's been pretty successful so far. The only that's not successful right now is we only had eighteen reports from December thirteenth on throughout the school year. I would have thought that number would have been a lot higher. If you look at the report from the IRBS, nineteen percent report being bullied at school within like the last twelve months. So it seems like kids are feeling more harassed than they are. And especially like when students take a survey and they put bullying on there, very few people know like the actual like definition of like bullying and how serious, like bullying's a serious problem. It's like when you actually follow instances by the definition, it's a horrendous, horrendous thing. Most fall under harassment. But even so, we should have more reports of even just harassment than what we've gotten. So hopefully this helps build a reputation that at Arrowhead, if you say something, we'll get taken care of and that you should absolutely be recording it if you're feeling unsafe or feeling harassed.
Can, can you try to differentiate microaggressions from bullying from?
Yes. Bullying is ongoing, right? So it's over a course of time. It happens more than once harassment happens one time by definition. With bullying, there's a power differential that can be in social status, that can be in numbers, that can be in just title or power as well. And there's perceived harm by the individual. What usually does not start to qualify it under bullying is a power differential or like the ongoing nature of it. The longevity piece is really what makes bullying like a harm in this thing. And it's a little bit equivalent to like ADHD, like sometimes like we use ADHD too much. But some people like suffers from like a really bad case of ADHD. It's like debilitating, it's like one of the most like debilitating illnesses that you could have. And so it's kind of talked about in those terms. Harassment is, I pointedly say to Sue, something nasty. Do it right now if you really want. But we won't. Microaggression is like, almost like death by like a thousand paper cuts. It's just like little things, little, little something here, little something there. Again, Daryl walks by every day in the hallway and I just like push his backpack. All right, and I push it again. And I'm like, oh, I hurt it or not. But it's, it's just like, when we talk micro, we're just like, if it makes you feel uncomfortable, if, if, if you don't like it, you let us know what that, what that is. So little things that maybe wouldn't always be labeled as harassment, but if it makes you feel away, we're going to track it right ahead of the camera and we're just going to hit it. Because a lot of that stuff gets to the level of harassment or bullying eventually. And one of the biggest things, I was walking, I became really proud of this once we, we started talking about it. I was talking to Thomas Stuber, one of our counselors, as we were walking from north campus to south campus. And we had just been talking about a student. And I said, hey, doesn't it seem like more students come to us from other schools? And they come to us from like the other schools and like, it's like one or two schools. And like, we went here, we went here. And they weren't successful for a variety of reasons. Just like they washed out, they, they're moving on because like they felt like they couldn't find success. They're like, people aren't working with them there, that they couldn't get credits. Even the schools are just like, yeah, we didn't know what to do with this kid or whatever. Like then they come here and they find success. And it's like, it's not because like we take it easy on them. But like they do seem like they find success here. And then I was talking to them, like, I'm trying to recall students that have left here. And then like, we've heard like great things about them like graduating or like getting back, like that doesn't seem to happen. And I just became really proud at that moment of like, it, it, it seems like if you're struggling, like if you can't find success other places, you can come to a place with a really high bar. And we're going to have people that wrap around you to help you find success in a, in a variety of ways. And again, that's, that's, everyone in the school works on, on, on that piece. And I think it's something to be proud of as a, as a, as a community that, that has as many resources as we do that students are able to parent and find success. Woo, okay, special education, hope you, let's make it quick, but there's a lot here too. Our, our people have been hard at work in special education. We're moving away from a traditional co-taught model, starting this next year with Stacy, our new running a pilot with our biology teachers to a co-plan, a co-serve model. What that means is that our special education teachers are going to start becoming more specialized within core academic departments so that we can reach more kids in a more inclusive setting and across teachers so that we don't need to have classes that are just for struggling learners, that all classes can contain struggling learners and that all teachers know how to work well with those struggling learners. It'd be a, a better way for us to manage our special education resources. We know one school Sue and I visited, Nicolay, that started doing this a year or two ago, and they've been very, very pleased with their results. and they've been very, very pleased with their results. All the other schools in Waukesha County, we've been talking about the same problem with co-teaching for the past three years, and we're kind of all on the same journey right now of moving to the co-plan, the co-serve model away from code, strictly co-teaching. The next few people, Mary Shaw, special education teacher, Blake Radkamp, special education aide, deserve a big kudos for the work they did this year in increasing access to regular education classes for those with intellectual disabilities. Tremendous, tremendous work on both of their parts. We now have a template and a model for all students that come in for how this is able to work and work at an extremely high, high level. Mary overseeing that entire process and working with Blake, and Blake doing a lot of the work with the teachers to say, what's your curriculum? I know the students, let me pare this down and we're going to get it to the students' level so that they're able to be classified, assessing class. Great. The teachers, we talked about this at referendum time, boy, if we could have one classroom that could fit all students at North and South Campus that have very similar learning needs, that would be a great way to redistribute, save some money and reutilize our special education aides. They're doing that willingly this year. Both North and South Campus came up with that, that that was the right move to make. It's going to be tight for them. The facilities are not prepared to take that on as they should be, but they see it as a definite necessity in terms of being able to work with our students at a higher level. And then we're in the process of doing the survey for next year, but our latest grad data on Arrowhead grads with disability shows that 94.12% are engaged in higher education, competitive employment, or other training and employment. It's an extremely high number. I don't have what the state one is off the top of my head, but we're far out and above what those state averages there. The other 5.8% that are labeled as like not engaged, we actually have such few of those students that I know who they are and I know what they're doing. They are not engaged in higher education or competitive employment or other training and employment, but they are doing day programs where they're still getting a fulfillment from life. So more of the chronically disabled population going to day programs provided by DVR, ADRC, and IRIS. So they are doing things, they're not just sitting at home, which is always good to see that they're getting some more of that, kind of the environment that we provide at school through, and in that post-hospital. Questions?
Can you answer?
Yes.
How many students do we have that we identify that are classified under special education?
150.
150.
Yeah.
And what are all their names?
Timmy, Tommy, Julie.
Probably do it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
It was quick. It was suicide.
It was quick. Eight, one hour and ten minutes.
Thank you.
You did well. I mean, it's an amazing amount of work and, I just want that to hear, but it's what you've been doing all year and how you condensed it to an hour and ten minutes, so.
There's a lot more to it.
I'm sure. Just come to the curtain, me too. Right. See?
There's remarkable work that goes on.
Amazing.
For students.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on to committee reports, curriculum, next meeting is in September sometime.
I guess.
Okay, moving on to financial legislation. Craig, other than what's there, I have nothing, you must judge.
Oh, you got name right. You didn't say Steve automatically.
It's got written dollars.
Oh, yeah.
I can just give a quick update on the state budget was approved by Governor Evers, so we do have a state budget now. We'll still go into the annual meeting with the current budget that was approved in April.
April.
April, okay. So we'll go with those same numbers, but the difference, one of the most significant differences for us is the per pupil categorical aid amount. We built the budget on $654 per student. What was approved ended up being $742 per student. So it's about $108,000 that will be used to offset the fund balance, the use of fund balance that is already planned in the budget. So it won't change anything going into the annual meeting, but when we get to October, that's the number we use to finalize the budget.
Okay, just as a reminder, we will not have a board meeting on August 14th. A board meeting will be at 6:00 on the 21st. Just a reminder.
Up in the North Campus community.
We'll be at the community board at 6:00.
Just so you pay attention to the agenda when it comes out. Cat's not sitting up here.
Well, by myself.
All right, voting grounds.
No meeting next month to kind of recap what's gone on in the summer, but still needs to be wrapped up. That'll be August 7th.
All right, under personnel, we do have an action item. As you recall, we did have negotiations with the auto group for the pay increases and things like that. They did not approve it on their end, so we basically have to rescind ours and then we go to mediation. So this is just a housekeeping thing, then we have to rescind our initial proposals on the base wages and then we'll be in motion to set up mediation with the auto group. So. We're going to entertain a motion to discuss an action to rescind the agreement.
Who?
Second. Motion second. Any questions on that? Do you have a minimum of all favor state? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A policy?
Yeah, that'll be another meeting Sunday, don't worry.
Okay, other. Committee reports, WSB, I have nothing to report. Sue, do you have anything?
I mean, I was going to mean that if it's still wrapped up from everything, you know, that's.
Okay. Under new business, play transactions, there's no resignations or retirements, but we do have a pretty long list of appointments. I just have questions, Gina.
Yep, John.
Yes.
Is she from within or somewhere else?
She is from Germantown.
Okay.
By way of practice, so she's 13 years experienced and when she interviewed down, it was very part of our interview team, but she was definitely excited to.
She's considered like the lead person like John was, or is there not a lead?
There's not a lead, no.
Who are you talking about?
Gina Ray.
Gina Ray. This is, the list is huge, I guess.
She's near the top.
She's highlighted.
All right, any questions, any other?
Oh, there, okay. I was, I totally missed that. I just kept going down.
Okay, you're not entertain a motion, approve the contracts.
So who?
Second.
Motion second. All favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have discussion action on the 660301, our governmental agreement between Arrowhead and North Harton Lakeside, reference school success, Arrowhead High School and North Shore School.
It's an annual approval of school success program.
Company change, it's going to save us $2,000 this year and then $8,000 will save next year instead of starting the year this year. So it went from Willa Glen Phoenix Academy to St. A's, which is a whole thing, very good, of course, with all the resources that St. A's has and their expertise.
Do you want a motion?
Motion.
Move it.
Motion, we have second.
Second.
We have a second. All favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is discussion action on the memorandum of understanding agreement between Arrowhead and St. A.
Same thing. This is not a contract for the 6603 that we're going to share.
So who? I mean, I move it.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions on that? Do you have none, all favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion and action on the revised Waukesha County Area Schools Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative Bylaws. Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions on that? Do you think we need to be aware of?
There's no changes to it. The only change is the directors, the three new directors. You think one of them?
And Pete Walkie has always been the fiscal agent. All right. All favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion and annual action on academic standards.
Make a motion.
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any questions on that? You're none, all favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, discussion and annual action to accept the seclusion and restraining report.
So who?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? It was nice to see all zeros.
It was.
It was.
That's why it was easy.
Have there been changes in how we approach this issue, Adam, or is it?
Not really. Our staff is really talented, really, really talented, and then it's a little bit of luck with the population that we serve. So I, you know, you can get luck in some respects, or in some respects, and then you're also talented with your staff and the others.
You know, and I would even comment, during years here or anywhere else where there is an instance, or one year, I think we had four instances with the same student, that doesn't necessarily indicate there's something bad, because a seclusion and restraint will always mean you're keeping that student or a student safe. And so, but, but it's nice when we don't.
When we don't, because that doesn't get explained if there, if there are, and it doesn't look, you know, doesn't say anywhere, we're keeping them safe. You know, it just looks like, oh, we have to do something, and then that gets like, you know, that's not it.
Exactly.
Okay, you have a motion, a second. Any other questions? You're none, all favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion, action, annual action to accept the random drug testing report.
So who?
Motion is second. Any questions on that?
Is that, that's about 14% of the population was tested was had a positive result, is that historically any different?
It's a slightly less than last year, if I felt it. It's normally right around there and the vast majority of those positives are for 19. So it's vague.
And is that typical, are numbers typical for the surrounding school districts?
I don't have that.
We don't share those. One thing that is different this year, we went to doing it like every week. It used to be once a month, we'd get 10 to 12 kids in each campus. Well, the problem with that was as kids realize, okay, we just had it, we're clean now, you know, we can be, we can go out for a couple of weeks and have, and not worry about it. Well, now it's, we do it every week and then a nurse comes in and she just does two or three kids every week. Well, you know, it's much harder to, you know, it's much easier to get caught this way. So, you know, chances of getting in there much.
It's harder to beat the system.
Yeah, it's harder to beat the system, yes.
So you're more likely perhaps to get positives?
We are, just because of, yes.
You don't see the pattern.
Yes.
So the random testing is more random?
It is more random.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Any other questions? You're none, all favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion and annual action to accept the school safety drills report, which is required.
So who?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on that? You're none, all favor state, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do not have any donations this time. Let's, can't, let's open this checkbook.
Back to switch.
It is pretty stacked up.
So it's a state statute, 1981, and for 1985, 1B, C, and G, Florida women do full session and need to address public students' manners. For this, for full session, super canyon review, all right, okay, motion to go on the full session.
So who's in there, Mike, the second?
Hey, thanks, you guys.
You got those things.
Who's the second? Who needs the motion?
Okay. Okay, the motion is second, roll call starting. Daryl, can I?
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Roll call.
Sure. Yes.
Well, I think.
All right, we're in full session. We'll take a short break right five years down.